Sharon is in the building. I'm here. We have Joe and Mary on the call. Is John Paul dialed in yet, Bill?
He's joining right now.
Okay. John Paul, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, that gives us five board members. So let's get rolling. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Rutland Select Board Meeting for Tuesday, November 10th, 2020, for a 6:00 PM start date. We have plenty to go over tonight, including a 7 o'clock executive session with the town's attorney for lawsuit discussion. So Kevin will be on at 7:00, so we'll have a hard stop at 7:00 to go into executive session. I'd like to recognize that tomorrow is Veterans Day, so thank you for all those who have served and sacrificed so much for our country, and thank you for what you continue to do. And we will get right to it. The orders are here at Town Hall. Carrie and Susan produced those. I looked at them and signed them. I think Sharon saw them as well, and then they'll be here for the rest of my colleagues at your convenience to come over. Approval of Select Board minutes of October 27th. At this time, a motion would be in order to approve for...
This is Mary. I move we approve.
Sharon made the motion. Mary beat you to it. Would you like to second that for us?
Sure.
Mary is the second. For discussion, any corrections, deletions, or additions? Hearing none at this time. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Those will be here at the counter in the clerk's office as well for everyone to sign. At this time, it would be an opportunity for anyone who's not on the agenda to speak during questions from the floor, public comment. Anyone on the Zoom call looking to address the board tonight? Howard, were you here for some, another reason?
Howard, you're on mute.
Howard, hit your mute button if you were talking.
Yeah, I was under all business.
Okay, all right, gotcha. Is Lyle Jepson on the call yet, Bill?
He is.
Lyle, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Lyle Jepson?
And I can see you.
There he is. Hello, Lyle. Lyle Jepson is here from the newly merged Chamber of Commerce and Rettick to take a few minutes of the Select Board's time. So let's go down to under New Business Letter A, board to me with Lyle Jepson from the Chamber of Commerce.
Oh, well, I'm honored. Thanks for moving me up. I'm not going to stand up because I'm wearing jeans, but I put my tie on tonight, so.
Very official.
And congratulations, Josh. This, I think, is your first meeting since being the Senate-elect. Is that correct?
That's correct, Lyle. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, both to Rutland Town and what you're about to do for the state and our region. So thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
I won't go on and on here about what's happened with the Chamber and Rettick, but Bill, I don't know if you can share screens with, with me. I have a brief, and I promise not to kill you with a PowerPoint here.
I think you, I think you should have the option to share your screen now.
You're the best. All right, can you see? Welcome?
Yeah, we see it.
All right, thank you. Well, as of September, well, basically October 1st, but we started September 1st. But officially, October 1st, Rutland Economic Development Corporation and the Rutland Region Chamber of Commerce became one organization with probably the sexiest title around with Chamber and Economic Development of the Rutland Region. So it just rolls right off your tongue, but we decided we would say what it is, and that's what it is. So we combined the two organizations, and people will say, well, why'd you do that? Well, take a look at that briefly. I don't expect you to read all the words on there because it may be real small on your screen. But for years now, people have said, what do these different organizations do? And for years now, we've slowly come together, the Chamber and Rettick. And so if you look at the organizational structures prior to the merger, it's pretty much the same. And so we sat down years ago, and we put our policy committee together. We put our marketing committee together, and a natural connection began. COVID certainly sped that up, and so now we are one organization, and we went through a very thoughtful process of about four months. And again, I don't expect you to read all of the stuff that's on here, but I want you to, the takeaway is that it was thoughtful. There was a lot of planning. There was a lot of work and a lot of meetings that went into play to beginning in June and ending in, in basically August. We looked at the mission of both organizations, and within 90 seconds, we decided wordsmithing wasn't all that difficult because we were doing very similar things. Rettick was working with big business, and the Chamber was working with retail hospitality industry. Now we work with all sectors of the economy on behalf of the region. And these are things that we'll publish and are on our website, but what is it we do anyway? We're, we are speaking with one voice. We are eliminating duplication. We went from a staff of six to a staff of four. We're taking advantage of the expertise of those staff members. We're aligning our services, and we hope to be a one-stop shop. So if you come into the current Chamber building, which is on the corner of Weston Merchants, we will be there. We may not have all the answers to your questions, but we hope that you'll come in with questions. So we went from basically two organizations with 13 committees to one organization with seven committees and a board. We have 55 people, all professionals in their field, who are on these committees, working diligently on behalf of the region. So you can see the different committees of business development, marketing, membership, and so forth, and we meet monthly with each of those committees. You're going to see some different colors here, and these colors represent what we can do during COVID and what we can't. The green, we can do during COVID. We can advocate for our region. We can work with our members. We can actively support the mint maker space. There are things we can't do, like a business show where we all get together, but we're working on what types of events can we do? Because we strongly believe that we need to socialize. We're social beings, but we need to be careful in how we do that. We can't be physically present, like tonight. We can't be physically present with one another, but we figured out a way to socialize, and that's extremely important, and we will figure out ways to get people together. People will basically say, well, how much did this thing save when you put everybody together? Well, we had a budget of about $1.1 million. That includes the regional marketing initiative, so that's not all in staff. But now we have a budget of about $848,000, and that includes the regional marketing initiative within that. So I know I'm going through this quickly, but you may have heard about this whole thing, and I don't want to bore you. The first thing that we did, that we rolled out when the governor announced that masks were required, was we purchased 50,000 masks, and we began to deliver those to all forward-facing businesses in the county. We went all the way up to, well, I actually went into Addison County, went to Orwell and delivered to a couple of businesses there. But we went to Killington, to Fairhaven, to Wallingford, to Rutland, to Rutland Town, and delivered boxes of masks so that when people initially came in that first week, they weren't, didn't have to be turned away. We didn't want there to be arguments over safety. And so now people have their PPE. They're in good shape, but we rolled out about 50,000 masks within the first week. Second thing we did was we put together a survey of our 400 businesses, the members, and it was surprising that 57% of them came back and said, we want you to continue the regional marketing initiative. We want you to do technical assistance for businesses. And so we've been doing those things, and we have Zoom meetings on every other Wednesday that have our high interest for businesses. We also have been working on the economic recovery grants and supporting folks by being navigators with those grants. So one of the things, and the other reason that I'm here, not just to talk about this merger, is to talk about the regional marketing initiative. And people are going to say, well, why are we inviting people to come here when we can't invite people to come here? Well, we're not doing that. We're not asking them to come visit us right now, but I want to show you something that we are doing. And I'm going to change my screen here. First of all, I want to show you where's the money been going for this regional marketing initiative. Hopefully, you can see these numbers that I made them big enough, but at the, at the end of the day, we've raised $482,000 over the last four years. We've raised 270,000 of that from businesses that recognize that they need a labor force that is skilled and that we need to attract more people to come here. We've raised, and the figure that says Rutland City 100,000 is actually 138,000, and they have just contributed another 16,000 in the coming year to something that I'm going to show you. Your contribution in the past, and we appreciate it very much, and Rutland Town is a member of both the Chamber and Rettick, and now the Chamber and Economic Development. In the past, you have donated just over $4,000 a year to this initiative, recognizing that we need to keep Rutland County on the map, and so thank you for that. I was in Proctor last night. I've been in Pittsburgh. I'm going to Fairhaven, going all to, to as many towns as will, are interested in talking about this process. So you see that we got a grant. We are raising money through municipalities. We're raising money through asking businesses for support. Now, a smart businessman then says, well, how you spending that money, Lyle? Well, over the last four years, we have spent $443,000, and we have spent that on our marketing firm. We've spent that on digital advertising, print advertising. And so we now have about $22,000 in the bank, and we have a plan for the coming year, assuming COVID is, hopefully, post-COVID by the end of the summer. We have a budget of about $119,000 that we're raising money for. So what are we raising that money for? Well, hopefully, in the summer, we'll be able to do some marketing. But until then, we need to stay connected with all the folks who have come to our website. And again, I don't expect you to read all these words here, but we have 5,000 people that have come to the website, real Rutland.com. We are now actively automating this process so that when people come to the website, they're going to receive concierge services. And a concierge are people just like you and me. They live here, and they live in different towns within the county. We have a concierge training session, if anybody's interested in that. We have a concierge, concierge training session on Thursday night. About 20 people are going to be at that, and they're going to be the catchers because we're going to automate this system, and we're going to put 500 names through this filter at a time, hoping that someone's going to come out over here as a hot lead. And those hot leads, we're going to stay in touch with because we want them to move here and potentially move their businesses here. So this is what you're looking at, is a filter that we're going to shake people through, hoping that they're going to come out as a hot lead at the bottom. How does that work? We have about 20 different emails that we've created, and each week, people are going to get an email. Those 5,000 people will get an email. They have three options. They can opt out. They can continue to get emails, or they can connect with the concierge service. We hope they'll connect with the concierge service. We don't know how quickly this will, will work, and people have said, well, you've spent over $400,000. What has it gotten us? Well, it's gotten us people, about 62 people, to be exact, 26 families. And if you divide that into 400-plus thousand, you say, well, that's a lot of money per person. But what if we didn't get those 62 people? And what if we lost 62 people? And we didn't have a population or a population that went down by 124? That's what we've been seeing over time. We're now beginning to slowly reverse that trend. And I hate to say that anything positive can come from COVID because that really isn't the case, except that we have seen property values grow up. We are seeing people coming and hopefully staying. If you called up Killington School up in Killington, they would say they've increased their population in their school. So we are getting notoriety. The governor and the state have done a great job, and we are the safest state right now. We need to protect that. So we're not inviting these 5,000 people here. So I hope people don't leave tonight saying, oh, they're inviting 5,000 people to come to the state. No, we're not. We're staying in touch with them so that when they can come, we'll be able to welcome them. So if you've heard me talk about these things in the past, and I'm no stranger to your, your board meetings, thank you very much, you've tolerated my conversation about the pie, and right now we have a tax pie that's about that big. And each year, our legislators, like Josh, will go up, and they will re-slice that pie, making some people mad, some people happy. What we need to do by inviting people here is we need to increase the size of that tax pie so that our schools will have more students, so that we can do the paving of the roads that we need to do, so that we can take care of our waterways. We need more people to slice that pie so that we have a bigger pie, and we can spread the wealth around. So I can talk on and on, Mr. Chair, but I'm here tonight, yes, with my hand out, and my hand is out asking for your support once again. Rutland Town has been amazing in its consistency. We appreciate that. This is a 10-year plan, not a two- or four-year plan. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than willing to make up an answer.
Well, I appreciate the presentation, Lyle, and it's always good to see you, sir, and I'm glad to see you're back in Rutland County, leading the charge here, and you never felt right when you went to Randolph to go run that technical school, but needless to say, once again, I assume you're looking for a dollar per person from the Town of Rutland. Is that correct?
Correct. That's what we're asking towns to contribute.
You're looking a little less than $4,100 then? So we've, to my colleagues on the board, we have, in years past, it was question number 15 on this last Town March, Town Meeting Day ballot in March for $4,054, and it passed overwhelmingly this past Town Meeting Day. I'd ask comments from my colleagues at this time. Questions or comments to Lyle? Who'd like to start?
This is Mary.
Hey, Mary.
Hey. Hi, Lyle. Mary Ashcroft.
Hi, Mary.
Two questions. Can you hear me okay?
Sure.
Three questions. Okay, that's one. Two is, the presentation you just made, I'm calling in, so I didn't see it. Is this available on your website?
It is not, but Mary, I can email you the documents that I just, and I can actually, maybe it would be better to email them to Bill, and then Bill can send them out to the Select Board if you'd like that to happen.
I would. Thank you very much. That's two. Three is, we have also done a special appropriation on our ballot for Rettick in the past, $2,500. What's, what's the proposal this year for that?
Great question, and I, I should have planted that, but thank you. You're bringing up a good point. We are combining those membership dues so that you actually will save $200. So instead of paying whatever it would have been, it'll be $200 less. Combining the Chamber and Rettick together.
Okay. Because I think, I think the Chamber dues was a budget item as opposed to a separate appropriation, and Rettick is a separate appropriation.
Yeah, you're, you're correct, Mary.
Yep.
So I would need your guidance as to what you would need from me to have it be whichever way you want it to be.
Okay.
That's a good catch.
It might, it might be something, Mary, that we decide next week at the budget meeting that we would just include the dues for the Chamber and Rettick in the general budget rather than asking the, as a separate appropriation.
And then leave the, the regional marketing initiative as a separate appropriation. Okay.
Correct.
All right, we can talk about it next week. Thank you.
In my email, Josh, I'll send you that new amount. Again, that'll be less than what was charged before or donated to us. Okay?
How about, I'm with Sharon. Sharon, any questions? No? And Joe DiNardo, any questions for Lyle?
No, no questions. A very good presentation, and I wish them the best of luck on their plans.
Thank you, Joe.
John Paul, anything?
All set.
So, Lyle, it sounds like we'll discuss, we're, we're having a special budget meeting some, next week, and we will have a better understanding of the dues and fees between the two agencies, and then out of that meeting as well, we'll decide at that point, I would, I would, I'm not speaking out of turn, but I would assume from the support I've heard tonight from my colleagues that we would once again put the question back on the March ballot, asking the taxpayers to expend a little under $4,100 in support of the marketing efforts.
That's great, and if you need something more from me, more information, more than willing to come back and, or send you what you need.
Maybe, maybe, well, it depends on COVID, of course, but maybe some of these agency heads come to the pre-Town meeting at the school the night before the March election, so. Who knows if that, that might be virtual this year. Who knows what it looks like, but maybe, maybe, you know, speaking directly to some of the taxpayers would be a good idea.
Again, I'll, I'll look to your guidance on that and do whatever you feel is best. I also will send Bill our annual meeting movie. We made a movie about the county. Every town is represented in the movie. It is a feel-good 34-minute opportunity to see your neighbors, and there are new, there are interviews with four different families, one family of which has been in the county for generations, and then three other new families to the county and why they came here. It's something you might want to take a look at. It's, it does, it feels good about why we're here.
Lyle, just a quick, I think you do need to send a letter to us requesting the regional marketing initiative be put on the ballot.
Will do.
Lyle, thanks so much for your time. Good to see you, my friend.
All right. It's nice to see you all, and thank you for the time. I know you've got more important things to do, so have a great night, and I will sign off.
All right. Take care.
Take care.
Okay. Always good to see Lyle. Let's, the board doesn't mind here, so Howard doesn't have to sit on the call all night. Let's jump down to old business table discussion on naming a road past the end of Blueberry Lane. So, folks, where did we leave off two weeks ago on this item?
Trying to discuss is the best way to do it, Josh, so.
Yep. I thought, I thought, I, I asked that question, Joe, because I thought we were getting more information, or we were talking to Pittsburgh again about.
Yeah, Josh.
Yeah, they were.
Go ahead. Yeah, well, let me chat, let me update you with where.
Yeah, thanks, Howard.
I spoke with Lyle Tyler from the E911 Board to get his take on it. His, his first choice is to just name it Blueberry Lane Extension. No, I'm sorry, Blueberry Lane PVT. He just claimed Blueberry Lane PVT, keeping the same road name in place, indicating that if that road name stayed there and if there was future development, you know, years down the road, and nothing would have to change, but he, he wasn't opposed to adding extension to it. So it could be, with him, it could be Blueberry Lane Extension dash PVT because it's a private road. Now, Pittsburgh, on the other hand, who's been handling this thing, they just, their Select Board last week came up with Blueberry Lane Extension and no PVT in it. They have notified all the landowners, the property owners in the area, and, and one of them, the LeVacs, I'll just tell you what, what the LeVacs said, that the partners of the Levac Farm LLC support the roadway's rename of Blueberry Lane Extension. So unfortunately, couldn't get everybody in the same room at one time, and this is a case of, I guess, where do we want to, where do we want to go with this thing? It is, it's a private road. We have three towns actually come together in a corner right near this point we're talking about in Blueberry Lane. And so we've got, you know, three fire departments, the state police covers it, and then we've got basically two angulances, Rutland Regional and then Pittsburgh, and I, I'm not sure, maybe Chittenden has something on it too, but so I, again, I think it's really our call is what we, where we want to go with it here, and, and the most complete one probably would be Blueberry Lane Extension dash PVT. That's, that's my take on it.
Hey, Byron, are you, are you still on? I don't see you on the screen.
He's there. He's on mute.
Okay. Can you hear me, Byron? Well, anyways.
And you know, when we go with the PVT, I guess the question that comes up is, who's going to handle the fire part of it? Is it, is it, if it's going to be a private road, so to speak, in Pittsburgh? Are they going to be the one that gets the first call on it? That's something that, that didn't get worked out, and I'm sure the fire department is, has some interest in all of this.
Josh, I think, I think Chris is probably on, but when they had the forest fire up there this summer, Pitt, Pittsburgh got the first call to go to that fire when it took off into the woods, and then they called mutual aid, and so they would probably be the first ones to go. And if I remember right from our discussion two weeks ago, the first 1,900 feet of that road are in Rutland Town. So, and it starts from a town road, so I think that, you know, what we decide is going to be the name is what it's going to be because it's leaving from a town road through the town till it gets into Pittsburgh, and, and Blueberry Lane Extension Private seems to be the best choice.
So Chief, well, Selectman DiNardo.
Not chief anymore, no.
No, it's nice. Chief Clark is not on the call. He had a fire training tonight to attend. And, but needless to say, I was hoping Byron was going to jump back on because I, I wanted him to refresh our memory on what his, I, if I recall, he didn't want it to be Blueberry, correct?
He didn't care about the Blueberry. It's just, I think if I remember right, and I'm trying to read into the minutes, what we talked about here is the town roads that are private roads have the place designation versus the private, and Pittsburgh used it private instead of place. Not, that's not a real big deal, but I think we should keep it somewhat close together with the location. Most folks would, in the area, kind of know where Blueberry Lane is in Rutland Town, so if you're going to Blueberry Lane Extension, especially when you're dealing, I think, with the state police and regional, not so much the fire department, they, they'll be okay, more or less, but regional has to go there, and the state police might be going up there. I think that they know where Blueberry Lane is in Rutland Town, and if you're going to Blueberry Lane Extension, that would make it the easiest for them to associate those things together.
Byron is back on, and thank you, Joe, for those, thank you, Joe, for those comments. Byron, would you just refresh our memory on what your, your comments were last two meetings?
My comments were in keeping the name of the road somewhat similar. 20 years from now, it could be construed that maybe with different people, so forth, that, you know, it's actually a town highway, and it's not. And currently, there's only one, one resident there. There's no requirement for a, a, a road to have a name unless there's three on there. So, I mean, you're, you're giving, so do we run over to Dave Heaton's driveway and give his driveway a name? Do we run up to Dr. Price's and give him, you know, he's got a long driveway. Do we give that a name? You know, for years, and, and to think that a different name is not going to allow people to have their, to know where it is. I guess I don't buy that, Joe, because, you know, do you know where Floating Acres Place is? Well, that's.
Yeah.
Pittsburgh Road. You know, Sadie's Place, Spring Brook Place. You know, we've got all of them all over town. You learn where they are when, when a 911 address gets, gets brought up on the screen. They know where it is. They can direct fire departments. They do now. They direct our own fire department a lot of times. So, but those are just my opinions. You certainly can do whatever it is you want to do, but with only one house up there, I don't, it's, it's just a driveway at this point, and that's all it is, and it may be 20 years before we ever see any more people up there.
I think it's going to be sooner than that, but they've, they've sold some other lots and.
So for Howard and Byron, the, the one house that's up there now, what is, what is their address? How do they identify where they live?
Well, there is a number that went with it. that they're proposing to use. And it's, it all depends if we, if we continue the numbering of Blueberry Lane or if we start with a new road in Pittsburgh. The number that's on for that house right now is 1195. And the last number that we have in, in town where this all starts is 449.
And that 1,100 number, whatever it was, Howard, there, are they, are they in the home already or it's being built?
No, it's, it's, it's still, it's under construction. It's, they'll probably be in, won't be in until the spring, by the looks of it.
So why are we as a town being involved in placing a name on a private road?
Thank you, JP. That was going to be my question, too.
I, I don't know. I don't have a good question or a good answer to that question. Sharon has the same question. So three, three of, at least three select board members are asking the same question, so.
Well, it's proposed to be a development with, with three or more drawings on it. I think that's where it all started. And, but I guess when you get three or more, then it has to have a name. And so there were just, you know, getting ahead of the game a little bit here, but trying to get, get something that would work.
But it's. Well, in order for that. But the end of the day, it's still a private road.
Right, JP, but wouldn't they, in order for 911 to work and somebody to find that residence, it has to have an address associated with a name, even if it's private. It would be the same as Chaffey Place down here off of North Grove Street. That's a private road, but it has to have a name so that it designates the, where it is. I think the fact that.
I understand that, but it's the people that own the property that name the road. It isn't the town. The town doesn't name those roads.
Normally, but we have an opportunity to be part of this and we can do that. I mean, we, we did this up there, wasn't it? Honeybee Lane off of, or whatever we named there up where Pawcats lived? We were involved with that. And I don't know if that's a town road or a private road, but, but we had the discussion for two or three meetings. So we have the opportunity here to put our two cents in and, and just do it and move on and down the road, whatever. I, I, I don't see the same, and I, and I don't want to argue with Byron, but I don't see the similarities between Dr. Price and Dr. Heaton's because those are driveways. And at this time, there are no subdivisions off of those two long driveways. Those are private driveways to one residence. And just because there's only one house up there now, the potential for two or three more is there. Get this done, move on. We, we talked about it for half an hour last meeting and we've been on it for 15 minutes this meeting. Just make a decision and move on with it. The Blueberry Lane Extension Private is fine and send it to Pittsburgh and be done with it.
I, I just add, you know, across the Leevax at 900 feet, who knows, somewhere down the road, Leevax may want to sell land on the side of that road right up to the Pittsburgh town line and, and put lots in too. So, I mean, there's a, there's a potential there for, for Blueberry Lane to extend. There's just a potential.
Well, the, one of my colleagues want to put something in a form of a motion for us to consider.
I'd make a motion that we propose either to Pittsburgh or however we have to do it, that the road be called Blueberry Lane Extension Private and that it's done with and that the developer be responsible for the cost of signs and posts and getting it posted.
Motion on the floor by Joe Donardo. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by John Paul. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright, motion passes. All right.
Thank you, Howard.
Howard, thank you. Byron, thank you.
Josh, one quick thing, if I could, just want to bring you up to date on the fire district situation over here. You know that we've been in a real drought this summer, the whole state of Vermont. Our water supply has been extremely low. We sent out notices a couple of months ago telling people to conserve. I notified the fire chief. And I don't know if the board here knew about it, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention that we're headed into a real tough season and the water table is still dropping, even though we have a few sprinkles along the way. We're, we're in for a tough winter. I just wanted to just bring you up so you'd be aware of it. Thank you.
Okay, Howard, thanks for letting us know.
Okay. Howard, I just had a quick question for Howard before he signs off. Howard?
Yes.
Um, with regard to the water situation over there, I mean, if, if you guys run into problems, you will have the capability of supplying that fire district from West Rutland, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so, so there is a backup plan if you run into trouble?
There is, but, but in a way we would do it is we would just, we fill the tank and then let it drain down some and fill it up again. We, we can't stay on their system because our, our tank is a, is 100 feet lower in elevation than theirs and, and of this, like 43 pounds of excess pressure up there. So it's a case where we would have to monitor the tank when it gets down to halfway or so, fill it back up again. It would be a lot of cranking the valves, opening, closing. But yes, we have the backup. We're still tied in with the city as well, so.
Okay, so, so the, the residents over there and the fire protection would pretty much still be intact and you have means to do it if you have problems with your well.
Yeah, and the fire chief knows that to try not to, if you have a neutral aid fire, try to stay, try to save our tank as much as it can because if we empty that tank, it'll be forever filling it up. We're, we're probably pumping down around 20 gallons a minute. And it's not good. It's the worst I've seen.
Thanks, Howard.
Okay.
All right, Howard, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's, I'd like to, if the board is okay with it, because we have a hard stop at seven to get with Kevin Brown on a couple of issues. Like to stay with new business. Board to discuss next step for the Northwood Park Shared Use Path. This is information that we were given from Byron, correct, Bill?
Correct. And it's number five in your packet.
Okay, number five from Otter Creek Engineering. Byron, did you want to walk us through this?
Well, that was a proposal that I asked Robert Clark for quite a, quite a while ago. And just to get a feeling as to what, you know, it might take for that engineering and stormwater permitting. And so I just, with that type of price tag, I felt that probably the, the project should be bid out. So that's why I drafted up a couple of meetings ago, a set of specifications for, you know, actually putting that out to bid if that is the board's desire.
So we're looking at a proposal of $18,000, Byron?
That's correct. And that's what's left in the budget item in my budget for that.
Okay. Mary, did you get a chance to look at this?
Uh, I just read it now, but no, we didn't look, we didn't look at it. At least I don't think so. Refresh my memory, Byron, if we did. But I was just looking at our purchasing policy and this would, this would be a major purchase because it's over $5,000 and we're supposed to go out to bid. On the other hand, with preferred vendors, we can go with a preferred vendor if we wish. But I don't know. I, I think it's probably better to use Byron's specs and put this out to bid.
I think that's, that's probably the best choice, Mary.
Someone want to put that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, I will so move that we, we put this, the engineering portion of the shared use path for Northwood out to bid using Byron's specs. Do you, and I'm guessing the select board wants to review those specs first or no?
I think we've seen them, didn't we? Byron sent them to us.
Yeah, I sent them to them when I, they were in your packet a couple of meetings ago. It doesn't matter. I mean, if you want to, you know, review it again, you know, the only thing is it would be nice while we still potentially have weather to get someone on board. They would get their survey work done. You know, sometime between now and December, then that would get them through the winter to get their, the drafting done and that sort of thing and get the permit application in.
I'll second Mary's motion.
Motion by Mary, seconded by Joe Donardo. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Sharon was an aye. Did we hear John Paul? Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, so we've handled both items under new business. We handled the one item under old business. If you're following along with the agenda, Mike Rowe had nothing to report. He had to, he had to scoot. And then Chief Chris Clark had a fire training tonight. So neither of those department heads are present. For the sake of time, why don't we go to Byron Hathaway for your regular highway commissioners' report?
Very briefly, we had applied for a grant for a new salt shed and also a grant application went in for the town line road culvert. I got the regrets letters yesterday and by email that we had been turned down on both of those grants. It was almost $7 million in grant applications for just over a million dollars worth of grant money. So that you can see that those grants are very competitive. I have met with the highway committee. We do have a budget. We will be discussing that, I assume, next week. Just to give you a heads up, it's down about 2%.
That's outstanding.
And then I did get a request from Bill Ballard in regards to a drainage issue up there. Would like to run that by the highway committee at some point in time. There's no hurry on this. But Bill would like to see some type of paperwork that would put the burden of maintenance onto the town for that particular drainage issue. So I'd like to review that with the highway committee first.
Okay.
Other than that, that's all we have. The only other question I have is this street sign for Blueberry Lane Place Private, is that going to be purchased by the town of Pittsburgh?
In my motion, Byron, I said that the developer would be responsible for the sign and the post and installing it.
Okay.
So that, that'll be up to Mr. Grace to take care of that and get it done in accordance with the, what needs to be there.
Okay, some type of notice or something going to be sent to Jim Grace in that regard?
Guess we'll have to. Or to Pittsburgh. I don't know, I don't know who's actually handling this, Pittsburgh or us. I mean, the road is in Rutland Town and the first portion is in Rutland Town. So I guess we could let Pittsburgh know and let Mr. Grace know that that's the name and we're good with that. And if they can, Mr. Grace can buy a sign.
Okay, so Howard will probably contact Pittsburgh and let him take care of that from there.
Yeah, it looks like, Byron, it looks like Howard jumped off the call, but we'll ask Bill to connect with Howard tomorrow.
Okay.
Thanks, Byron.
One quick thing from the highway committee meeting, and it's just a heads up. And that is, we were talking about the highway budget share of the stormwater related projects and realized that there's also stormwater in the general budget. And the question has come up whether we should be merging the two. So that will be something to consider at our budget meeting next week.
Okay. Thanks, Mary.
Just to let JP know, he had requested a couple of extra, or one extra 25 mile an hour, so, 25 mile an hour sign he put up by the school that was done today. And the small undersized sign was also changed out to the, the current standard. So both those signs are new. They're of the HIP type sheeting. It should catch your attention.
Thank you for following up on that.
No problem. And I have, Josh.
Byron, thank you for your efforts on those two grant applications. I know how much time and effort those take and it's too bad that we didn't get the funding, but nevertheless, nice, nice job on that, so.
We'll put that on your agenda.
Okay. Barbara, noise pulling. I don't see her on the call any longer. Oh, there she is. I spoke too soon. Barbara, anything going on for the planning commission?
Just a couple of things. We're having a public hearing on the Benettonos subdivision. That's next Thursday, the 19th. And that's a three lot, maybe just a two lot subdivision, depending on a offer that's being made right now. The second thing is also at that November 19th meeting, we're going to have Scott Dillon from the Vermont Division for Historic Preservation in attendance. And we're going to talk about the Thomas Parcel off Route 7 and Post Road and the historical site there, archaeological site there. We want to know what are the restrictions that the state has put on that area and also what options the town has to develop that area. It's, it's, it's a, it's designated commercial. So what can we do to promote commercial activity there? So we have this representative from the state coming down and you're certainly invited to join us. I'll report out at your following meeting as well. And then just a quick question, I know I'm going to be asked by the planning commission about the status of the Harbor Freight store. Where that stands.
Yeah, good question, Barb. The, there are some correspondence in the select board packet tonight. Things are moving quickly down there in terms of changes. So that information is a little outdated at this point. Needless to say, the three, the three, basically all these, the Barnharts and the developer of the land for Harbor Freight, originally were going to be required to have a sidewalk installed running east to west in front of all these down the road there. That was going to be to the tune of 80 some thousand dollars between the installation and this liability insurance policy that all these needed to purchase per their legal team. The Barnharts a couple of months ago had called town hall, the state, anyone who would listen to get the sidewalk removed from the plans. The state agencies agreed to remove the sidewalk from the plans because they understood that it was a, a, a large burden, financial burden and so on. Then Act 250, so as of right now, it's still in deliberations with the local Act 250 office. But my understanding is they are stuck right now on some type of a sidewalk requirement. So that's where it stands. I do know that the developer is getting somewhat frustrated with the, the process. They wanted to break ground in September and make this a, you know, a fall time project versus the additional costs of winter development. And I also last week talked to Senator Hooker and Senator Collmore on behalf of the town to see if they could get involved. I did get a call today from Senator Hooker who indicated that she felt that things were moving in the right direction. So that's where we stand right now. Where we, they have all of their other permits, stormwater permits and so on. They're waiting on this final Act 250 permit in regards to this sidewalk that they, they need some sort of. So I hope that was clarifying and I hope I didn't confuse anyone, but that's where we're at, Barbara.
Okay, that's a great update. Thank you.
Okay.
Josh, who is, who's pushing for the sidewalk now if the Act 250 folks said it, they, they could go ahead without it?
So it wasn't, it wasn't the Act 250 folks, Joe, that said they could go without it? It was a, what, what state agency was it? Isn't it AO? Was it Vtrans bill?
Yeah, withdrew, after they submitted the information.
Yeah, withdrew with, a- after they submitted the information from Aldi's, V Trans said that they made their good faith effort and withdrew their requirement.
Correct. Be- because Joe, originally it was going to be a thirty-something thousand dollar expense to build the sidewalk. Um,
Yeah, I know all the background Josh. I, I just want to know who's pushing for it now because I thought we had it resolved. And what really is frustrating me is the fact that we lost one business up on Route Seven on the Thomas property because of a sidewalk. And now we're looking to lose another business because of a sidewalk.
Well, we're, I, I would say that we're close to losing this project as of tonight. Uh, I was encouraged that Senator Hooker felt that she had, um, made a little progress today, uh, with, uh, the powers that be. But yeah, this, this is, um, a criteria, what they call criterium five in the Act Two Fifty, um, r- rules, uh, basically. And, uh, that's what's, from my understanding, holding the project up. Um, I have, uh, reached out on behalf of the board to the Act Two Fifty office. Um, and, uh, you know, expressed, you know, that we really want to see this happen from an economic standpoint, from a job. This isn't eighty jobs. This is, um, they don't, they don't come to a location that they don't think that they can do ten million dollars in revenue, annual sales a year. So we, you know, you can do the math and figure out what that would bring for tax dollars. So this is a project that we must see happen and it's stuck right now, sort of in the Act Two Fifty layers of Act Two Fifty. So, um, I don't know if my colleagues feel that we could do anymore when I, you know, I pushed the issue and was told that, reminded, not told, reminded that I once sat on the Act Two Fifty board and I under, and I should realize that they are a quasi judicial board. And, uh, you know, we shouldn't push so hard, uh, as, you know, uh, we don't have a whole lot, uh, in terms of say here. Uh, but so any, uh, all four of my colleagues, certainly, uh, I'd love to hear any other ideas that you may have.
Well, quite frankly, I don't think there's much more we can do. We're kind of stuck until Act Two Fifty.
Mary, any, you, you know, you, you have some Act Two Fifty experience, anything you think of?
Uh, well, uh, when this first surfaced a while back, yeah, an alternative would be for the town to take over the road, um, that leads from by Aldi's and then, um, um, well, take over the road, have the developer build the sidewalk, but then the town could also take over the sidewalk and assume the liability. And that's, you know, I'm, I'm not saying that's a great idea. I'm just saying that is one possibility, um, that we could offer to break the logjam. But everybody has to agree that it's a good idea for the town.
Sure.
Well, if, if we were to continue the road to Randberry Road at some point, which may happen, whether we get some development help or somebody to do it, we would end up with that section of road. This is the first step and I don't know. I, I just hate to see this business be turned away over, you know, I don't know, what is it, two or three hundred feet of sidewalk?
Well, it is and it's sort of a sidewalk, uh, as of right now, it's sort of a sidewalk to, to nowhere. I mean, they, you know, they have the Aldi's parking lot. People could walk through, um, and, you know, one of the arguments made was, you know, it's, this isn't an essential goods store where you get your groceries and, and medicine. This is a, you know, you're not walking to Harbor Freight to buy a compressor or, you know, a twenty-four foot ladder and carry it home. Uh,
I, uh, if you weren't walking to the car, uh, place up there either to get your car, you know, damaged fixed and walk home. So, yeah, the, the criteria B, that five B, I think is, uh, it's hard to enforce in a, to our type of town, in our type of situation where we don't have sidewalks. You know, if you were in Rutland City or a community where sidewalks, and it's too bad that the Act Two Fifty folks can't see that stuff, that there are no contiguous sidewalks in that area that, you know, this, this, like you said, it's a sidewalk to, uh, to basically comes out to Route Seven, but it amounts to nothing. I, I, I just don't get it.
Well, well, what about, um, maybe the board authorizing Mary to advocate her idea? That seemed pretty creative. And, and might, might be all that it takes.
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with the board taking, I'm okay with the town taking over that section of the road. Um, I don't know how Aldi's is going to feel about that because there's the, you know, the right of way goes with it and a certain width of road and everything. But, but if that gets that building in there, you know, Byron's going to have to plow, the highway crew's going to have to plow another little section of road. And I'd like to hear Byron, you know, if he thinks that that's going to be a real pain or if we can handle it.
No, that's fine. Cause that, that route on that end of town is very small and certainly could grow without causing any, uh, you know, drastic burden at all, Joe.
Okay, so, so I think JP, why don't you make that a motion and I'll second it?
So I move we authorize Mary to advise the Act Two Fifty Board of the town's willingness to take over the road in connection with the Harbor Freight development, including the sidewalk.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by John, seconded by, uh, Joe, uh, for discussion? The only discussion, the only, oh, go ahead, Mary.
Well, I was just going to say, this might better be, and I don't mind running, running with this, but it might be a message that needs to go to the developer rather than the Act Two Fifty Board, cause that would be, um, it, I just think that then they can make the proposal.
Okay, whatever you think is best, uh, whatever you think is best to get that idea to on the table in front of people.
Okay.
Yep, that sounds good.
Okay, you, so Joe, uh, JP and Joe, you'll amend the motion to, uh, allow Mary to contact the developer and pitch her idea versus Act Two Fifty Office?
Yes, whatever needs to be the proper direction, I'm good with. How about you JP?
Yes.
Okay, uh, while we're in the comment phase, the only thing I'd like to add is, uh, you know, uh, I know the, I know the good folks on that Act Two Fifty Board and, uh, they're hardworking people who care about the community. And so I think this is a more of a bureaucratic issue. The, 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 the legal reading of Act Two Fifty versus, uh, you know, the good people that, that do the hard work of, of this commission. So certainly we appreciate their efforts, uh, or I appreciate their efforts and I, I'm sure I speak for everyone here, so.
Yeah, they're, they're just interpreting what's put on paper to the best of their ability. Doesn't, you know, they didn't just develop that piece of paper or that volume of papers. They're, they just have to follow what, what's, you know, the roadmap. And sometimes things are not always in, well, you know, not that great, but anyway.
I thought the election was over.
Jeez, um, I, uh, I just want to make a point that the, you know, these folks, I mean, it was, when I, when I was on there for almost here, it's a, it's a real thankless job. Your hands are tied in many cases. And so they're, that our comments today are not directed at any individuals and, uh, we thank them for their efforts. It's a, it's a bureaucracy issue in my opinion, so. But anyways, there's a motion on the
Or not.
Okay, motion on the floor. Uh, any further comments? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, Barbara, thanks for, uh, thanks for bringing that up. Uh, it's burned a lot of good conversation here, so. Are you still on Barbara?
Yes.
Okay, anything further from the planning commission? Okay.
A question from, from Mary. Um, the minutes from our last meeting indicated that P N W Solar was supposed to be at this meeting. Um, and I'm taking that they're not here.
I have an update on that for you.
Okay, I'll go away. Thank you.
So I have a six, six fifty-nine. Did Kevin get on yet Billy?
Yeah, I'm here Josh by phone.
Hey Kevin, how are you?
I'm doing well, thanks.
Do you have
Hello, board?
Do you have, uh, ten or fifteen minutes Kevin? We'll, we'll, um, plow through, plow through the other three department head reports and then get to you.
Yeah, no problem at all.
Okay, so let's go to Chief Ed Dumas.
Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead chief.
Okay, so we have, uh, forty-one calls for service, uh, nothing out of the ordinary. Other than that, I really don't have a lot to go. We do have a police commission meeting tomorrow morning at town hall and on Zoom.
Short and sweet chief.
Yes, very short.
Colleagues, what do we have for Chief Dumas?
Ed, uh,
We will see him tomorrow.
Go ahead Mary, sorry.
Nope, just said we'll see him tomorrow at our budget meeting.
Okay, we'll see you there, Mar- Mary.
Ed, when the, uh, speed cart was at the firm last week, um, it was acting differently than the other times it's been here. Um, have you guys like modified, uh, how it works? What I noticed is that if you're driving less than what the posted speed limit it is, like if you're under thirty miles an hour, it doesn't light up. Is that, um, all programmed in to do that or is there something going on with it?
I believe it's programmed in, but I'll check with, uh, Deputy Chief Washburn, uh, tomorrow.
Okay.
Change something or maybe, but maybe the battery is dead or something. I don't know.
There is a way to program it, so there's, it has to hit a minimum speed before it lights up.
Okay, cause, cause what I noticed is that if you're driving the speed limit, it didn't seem to come on quite as quickly. And then it would shut off, well, before you got to it. And, and when it was there before, it used to stay on. And the other thing it does is it doesn't light up like with the tractors. They, they go about eighteen to twenty miles an hour. And, and I'm wondering if it's a setting to, you know, you can do that so it saves the batteries and, you know, you don't need to know that you're only doing twenty.
Yeah, I believe it does. It does do that.
Okay. All right, well, just something that I just noticed it was acting differently.
Okay.
Anything further for the PD? All right, chief, thanks. Um, Paul, did you have any health officer stuff? All right, uh, Kerry Clark, are you on?
I'm here Josh.
Kerry, how are you tonight?
I'm good. How are you?
Good, go ahead.
Um, just want to say thank you to everyone that came out on election day. Uh, we had a successful election last one of this year. Um, and, uh, we had about eighty-one percent turnout from the town residents. And, uh, also just want to extend our congratulations to you Josh and every other person that ran and, um, won. And, uh, we wish you the best.
I appreciate it Kerry, thank you. Anything further for, uh, the clerk's office from the board? Kerry, thanks a lot.
Welcome.
Uh, we have, uh, Bill Sweet. What do you got for us Bill? Plenty of packet stuff.
Yeah, we've, we've been through a couple of things, but I've got some more to go. I'll do this as efficiently as I can. Uh, number one, uh, the meeting schedule and committee agenda items, we're making good progress on those. Uh, number two, uh, is from the building committee. It's a quote for repairing and repainting the, uh, paint in the hallway. Um, uh, it's, and that will include if we decide to replace the water fountain, uh, that will include repainting that wall after that's done as well. Uh, but basically there's just a lot of labor because it wasn't painted correctly. Um, when it was done, uh, previously, there had to be, all, all the paint needs to be sanded off. That needs to be redone and then repainted again. So there's a lot of labor involved in that. So, uh, that was the quote to, uh, to get that done.
I'd make a motion that we accept that quote for twenty-five hundred from Ray Seens Painting and Sealing.
Motion by Joe, is there a second?
Second.
Second by John Paul. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, Bill, what else?
So Josh, you have, you should have an original for that, to sign for that. Uh, number three is, uh, pricing to replace the water fountain, uh, in the hallway. Uh, uh, our, uh, resident town plumber, uh, Chief Clark has, has said he will look at it, uh, to see if he, something he is, um, willing to, uh, to help us with. He hasn't had a chance to do that yet. Um, but, uh, that is, that is the quote, number three is the quote for the actual, uh, water fountain itself.
Okay. What number was that Bill?
Number, uh, number three.
You have the number three over there? Oh, I'm sorry, I found it, sorry. Okay, so Joe, did you see this?
Yeah, I saw it, yep.
Okay.
I mean, we need, we need to do it. We just got to, you know, figure out if, um, Chris can do it or if we have to get somebody else. So what we're going to, I guess, need is some kind of an estimate on the cost of installation.
Correct. He was here this morning and, uh, took a quick look, uh, but couldn't take a deep look at it. He said he would do that, um, in the near future and, and let us know.
I think Joe, that we should, before prices continue to go up and parts are less available, I think we should still vote to, um, purchase this, uh, uh, system and then we can figure out the installation at a later date.
Yeah, cause what, what we got to kind of coordinate Josh is getting this done. So when the guy comes to do the painting, he can just do it all at once and doesn't have to come back. But, but I'm okay with that. I'd move that we purchase the, uh, new updated, um, water cooler for the eleven fifty-four eleven.
Motion by Joe, is there a second? Seconded by Sharon. Further discussion?
We still have plenty of money in the budget for these, these items, right?
Yes, we do Mary. Thanks for asking. We, uh, we did a deep dive on that a couple of weeks ago at our committee and we had plenty of money and plenty left over even with these two projects.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Number four, uh, Bill?
Number four i- is, uh, basically for your information, um, that's part of the municipal road grant for JP Sidewalk. Uh, they're just letting us know that the, that's the timeline. So it's still moving forward, um, so that's just the free information. Uh, number five, we've already covered. Uh, number six is the invoice from Rosenbauer for the initial payment, uh, for the new truck.
So this, this, uh, invoice is for the ninety percent of the contract. That's six hundred twenty-nine thousand, uh, sixty-five dollars. And we would need a motion to authorize the treasurer's office to send this, uh, and they can get the fire truck started.
So moved.
Um, motion by Joe. John Paul, would that be a second for you?
Second.
Second by John Paul. Further discussion?
Uh, question from Mary.
Go ahead, Mary.
I, I think we asked, uh, and I think he did, Kevin Brown, to look over the contract that was last, that we looked at last meeting. And I believe he made a, a recommendation that the specs were to be attached to the actual contract. Did that occur?
That's correct. And it did, it did Mary. We took the, we took the contract after Kevin reviewed it and we attached the specs that they had submitted to the, to the fire department, uh, which were what the fire department used to determine that this was the right truck for the town of Rutland. Those two things were attached, sent off and signed.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions from the board? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Uh, any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for that. What else Billy?
Uh, number seven, uh, is correspondence we received regarding Harbor Freight and some of the approval issues. So that details some, uh, some of where we're at. I did, uh, just yesterday get, uh, an updated, um, site plan, uh, submission, submittal to Act Two Fifty, uh, for, for them. It's a twenty-one page. It's, it's an updated, um, uh, plan. It says with the, uh, requested pedestrian accessibility, uh, within the project site, but it does not show up, up sidewalk along there. So, uh, I'll forward this out to the whole board so you guys can take a look at it, uh, but that just came in, uh, just yesterday. So, uh, they're still, they're still working on it.
Um, would you, uh, Bill, would you please, uh, that number seven, would you please forward that, um, to Barbara and, uh, the new information as well?
Yes, I sure will. Uh, number eight, uh, is, uh, an article on KLO controls expanding into the town is a good article for, uh, for the manufacturer moving into the town onto, uh, Seward, Seward roads. That was a nice thing to, uh, nice thing to see. Uh, some interesting information about them. Uh, number nine is from Robert Clark, um, for the final payment for Masterson Excavating, uh, after uh, after completing the Rambray Road Water Line.
So it says, includes as a signed application, we have reviewed the application, recommend the town provide payment to Masterson in the amount of one hundred fifty-six thousand, one hundred forty-one dollars and sixty cents. And uh, Byron, you're completely satisfied with the work down there?
Uh, there's a few punch list items, I, I talked to uh, Scott Matthews uh, yesterday about that. So this uh, one fifty-six is only a partial payment. If you look at the detail, there's been ten percent of the, of the request that's been withheld pending uh, paving and uh, coming to a punch list item. Um, I'll be back down there on Thursday to take another look.
Would you be com- would you be comfortable, Byron, if the board authorized the payment of that one fifty-six?
Yes, that's just a partial payment, yes.
Uh, is there a motion at this time from my colleagues to authorize the board to pay one fifty-six, one forty-one, sixty?
I'm so moved.
Motion by Mary, is there a second?
And I have a quick, oh.
Second. All second.
Joey, second.
Question for Byron?
Yes.
Okay, the items that are left remaining, including the paving, will the ten percent withheld be sufficient to cover them?
Uh, the paving is a um, uh, unit-priced item based on square footed, uh, square yardage. Uh, so I don't know what that would be, uh, Scott was down there measuring that up uh, yesterday. Um, and Wilk was just getting ready to, to put the uh, top coat on. Um, so I will go down Thursday and double-check to make sure that's all done, make sure the driveways, uh, gravel driveways have been shimmed up and that sort of thing. And there's a dirt pile by one of the hydrants that needs to be cleaned up, and that's also a punch list. Yeah, so your, your ten percent retainage um, is on the work that has been done thus far. So in other words, when you get to, when you get the next bill, you'll have the, the unit pricing for the paving, there'll be a ten percent retainage on that. Um, and then there's the punch list item, so I think by the time you get the next bill, um, everything should be all set and I'll take care of. But right now, the system is, all the hydrants are live, um, and, and there's water there.
Okay, thank you.
Byron, did I see somewhere where they had uh, flushed those and made sure there, there's no debris? I think I saw that someplace.
Yes, there was an additional flushing on those hydrants to make sure there was no debris in them.
Okay, thanks for taking care of that.
Number ten, uh, Bill?
Number ten, uh,
Uh, point of, point of order, Josh.
Yep, Joey.
Don't we need to vote?
Good call, yeah. Uh, my, my apologies, um, any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thanks for catching that, Joe. Uh, number ten, Bill?
Number ten uh, is a copy of the state statute on town lease lands. Um, I have been contacted by a, a local attorney uh, who questioned whether or not we voted to affirm this or not. Um, the statute says as of July, if the board did not vote before January one of twenty twenty, uh, the leased, leased land occupants, the ownership of that property can revert to them. Um, so that's information on that. I talked to Kevin Brown briefly about it, we can discuss that in a little more detail if you need some specifics. Um, because it can, it can be different by a property owner if we need to, and there may be, may need to be a resolution. Um, and, but we can talk about that uh, because it gets specific uh, in the executive session if you need to. Um,
Or, or we can talk about it in open session, I can explain uh, the, the statute and um, the Glebe Land issue if the board, if the board wants.
This is Mary, I think we were aware of the statute, we were aware, cuz we had like two or three years to prepare for it, and um, I, I don't think we intended to retain any of the leased lands, but
I haven't heard of, right, I, I haven't heard of any town that took any action to retain uh, the leased lands because the uh, the monetary value of the lease payments, which most towns suspended decades ago, is so small, it, it is dwarfed by the cost of figuring out in the land records what the orig- the original lease required. So I, I did do a resolution for Bristol, uh, simply because the issue came up, and the town, and the town needed to release its uh, Glebe Lands in order for a transaction to go forward. Uh, it hasn't come up in any other town uh, that I'm, that, that I'm involved with, and it hasn't come up in the Town of Rutland, so uh, everything I had written to the town before, and with respect to the issue when it arose with respect to Ed Dumas's property, um, it is the same, uh, you know, the, the leased land payments, the leases were really small payments, and even though they continued in perpetuity, it's uh, it comes to a couple hundred bucks, it would cost um, multiples of that to actually figure out in the land records, to search the land records, to find the, to find the lease and figure out what the lease payment was, so um, it's, it, it makes just a ton of sense for the town to have uh, let the statute uh, take effect, what, and then not have to pass resolutions, so um, I'm not aware of any town that, that did anything on its own to maintain its, its leased lands, but the statute cleared up a real problem, in that mo- a lot, an awful lot of towns were simply quit claiming away their leased land rights, when a title search indicated that there might be some leased land payment, uh, existing leased land requirement. Um, it was often really difficult to figure out where the leased lands were, so um, most towns were quit claim, were executing a quit claim, but that was actually contrary to Vermont law, because the leased lands are held in public trust, and you can't just give them away according to the statute, you have to value them. You have to value the income stream, and then, so say it was two hundred bucks, I, I did the calculation uh, previously for the town in twenty sixteen, it might come to a couple hundred bucks. Uh, but, and then you can, this, this existing statute, public trust statute, would require the town to park that money in a separate account, and then uh, use the interest. So you'd have a, you have accounts with a hundred and fifty-seven dollars that are generating a dollar fifty-six uh, of interest payments for the town to use, it, it just made no sense for anyone, which is why the legislature uh, put a bullet between the eyes of the Glebe Lands. They made sense two hundred, they made ten, two hundred and twenty-five years ago or so, or when the Republic was new, a new state, but it doesn't make sense anymore.
So Kevin, we don't have to do anything, the statute has operated, correct?
Correct. Kind of like the uh, ancient road statute from ten or fifteen years ago, where the town had to take affirmative action in order to avoid the effect of uh, the sunsetting of uh, the, the uh, ancient roads, so the same, the same process has applied here.
So the,
The, you know, so the towns, the towns of Glebe Land interests are gone.
So,
Right.
For, for a leased land like Ed Dumas's, for example, somehow, there's a mechanism in place that the Lister's Office would then um, account for that being part of Dumas's overall property, and then it's appropriately uh, valued.
Not anymore, it's just, it's just uh, completely wiped out by operation of law, it's a, it's a historical anachronism that now has no longer any legal effect, so uh, when people need to sell or refinance, and their land may contain uh, leased lands, otherwise known as Glebe lands, then uh, the title searcher can just ignore it. So transactions will proceed uh, like, as the same way that any other traction proceeds that doesn't include Glebe lands.
Okay. Um, I think I understand.
Do, do we have to do anything, or does this just automatically take effect?
No, we don't have to do anything. It's done.
All right, good.
Okay, is there any further discussion on leased lands? All right, Bill, what else you have?
Uh, I have, uh, number eleven is from Jim Schultz uh, for an agreement, he's on the call. Uh, and would like to discuss the board signing that agreement for him. Uh, there is, and I got two other things. Um, PNW Solar, Mary, to follow up with you, uh, they emailed me and uh, let me know that the archaeological portion of the site was bigger than they anticipated, and they are withdrawing their project. Um, they said if we decide to proceed, they'll get back in touch with us, but as of now, they've withdrawn that uh, because of the archaeological components. That was Barbara's comment about the uh, the person, the guests that are having come to the Planning Commission meeting, so they can discuss with us what that is. Uh, and so that way, we can kind of help guide people that are gonna look at that property in the future. So, as of right now, that is uh, stopped. Um, so, I thought you were right, they were gonna be here tonight, but that's why they're not. Uh, the last thing I have is uh, there has been a conflict uh, for um, board members, some, some of, for next week's planned budget meeting. Uh, so there's been a request to uh, move that meeting to another night.
Um, yeah, so uh, the um, budget meeting, we had sort of planned on the seventeenth. Um, is that something that uh, we could move folks to that um, Monday night, the sixteenth? Would that work for folks' schedule?
Works for me.
It's okay.
Sharon, Sharon's good, Mary, I heard everyone, okay. So Bill, you'll let um, all department heads know, and you'll warn that as a public meeting for the budget process?
Oh, I'm sorry, which night?
Monday the sixteenth for six PM?
Okay.
Thanks for, thanks for that.
Josh, are we gonna do that meeting the same way we're doing this one?
I, I would believe so, Joe, unless uh, someone felt strongly about changing it, but this seems to be fine. Bill, I did ask Bill uh, earlier today that once uh, all five uh, budgets are um, constructed, uh, that he would get us uh, each the five sheets with the um, proposed numbers, so we'll all have all of the worksheets in front of us while we discuss it, and then we can make appropriate changes if there are any at the, at the meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, question about that, were the um, people under the general budget, like the Planning Commission, like the Listers, like um, the Town Clerk, were they all contacted to provide input for the general budget?
Uh, Bill, I know, I know that Bill and uh, the Clerk's Office had uh, inputted some of the numbers that we needed. Um, I, I couldn't confirm, Mary, uh, if the Listers or the Planning Commission, so I think it's a really good call, and I think that uh, I'd recommend that Bill, that you contact those different departments and
Yeah, that's, that's already been, been done. Barbara, they talked about it at their last meeting, um, I don't think we just paid anything changing. Uh, for, for the Planning Commission, uh, the Listers were working on it, there was one thing they had to just confirm. Uh, the mapping company, uh, which was Dean Davis, has been sold, he sold it to somebody else, so they just wanted to double-check that. Uh, but other than that, uh, everybody's been, everybody's been involved, and um, Brett should be ready to go.
Good, thank you.
Okay, um, this uh, Jim Schultz here on the call?
I am here, are you getting me?
Uh, J- um, I would defer to Mary and John Paul, is this document or discussion worthy of executive session for um, due to the,
No, but it might be worth having our town attorney take a look at it.
Good, good idea.
Josh?
Go ahead, Joe.
I'd like to pu- I'd like to point out that uh, in the beginning sentence, the first sentence, disagreement is made between the Town of Rutland here and after uh, Rutland, and the Rutland Town Fire District number one here and after Fire District, and if you read the next sentence, the, they refer to the town portion as town and not Rutland, so the whole contract has to be, this has to be rewritten to reflect either that it's gonna be Rutland, or it's gonna be town, otherwise it's confusing as hell.
Jim, was this, was this written by an attorney?
Yes, that was done by Gary Cutford.
Well, he, he missed the ball by about three weeks, because they, it, it's not in agreement with the very first uh, sentence.
Well, this is Kevin, that sounds like housekeeping, that's pretty easy to clean up.
That's fine, but if we're gonna sign it, it needs to be right.
So why don't,
Otherwise, yeah.
Why don't, why don't we ask Kevin to review it, and Jim will have a, we can uh, have it back for you in two weeks?
Yeah. That's fine, what does it do?
This is in regards to an agreement between the town and Fire District One in regards to a couple properties that need to go up for tax sale, and some of the money, division of some of the monies.
Okay.
Does someone wanna make a motion to send this to Kevin?
So moved.
I heard Sharon first, so we'll take Sharon, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes, so we'll, we'll get Bill, we'll get uh, send this off to Kevin, and Jim will get uh, this stat, and we'll, we'll talk about it in two weeks, okay?
Okay, uh, do you want Kevin to get directly in touch with Gary and have them make sure there's no issues?
Yeah.
I mean, if, if needed, but I'm sure Kevin, Kevin, I mean, it's very basic, I'm sure Kevin can look at it and make the little changes that are needed.
Yeah, if there's any housekeeping, I'll get it cleared, if there's anything more than housekeeping, I'll let the board know, but if it's just you know, housekeeping that, you know, just changing, making sure it's consistent language throughout, well, I'll get those uh, changes made with, with Gary, and we'll get it to the board in front of, you know, for the next meeting for execution.
That would be good, cuz the um, it'll have to go back to the Fire District too, but they've already signed it.
Oh. Okay.
Evidently, they can't read. Okay, um,
Thank you.
Okay, uh, it looks like we've covered all department heads, uh, new and old business, before we uh, go into executive session with Kevin to talk about pending legal matters. Uh, is there anything that needs to come before the board tonight? Uh, Sharon, anything? Mary?
Uh, just that I've been in touch with Carol Bam and Janelle Fagnant um, about the circle, and um, we're, we've authorized the purchase of a prog- publishing program, and expect to see a circle late December or early January. And um, folks will be contacted as before to contribute items to it, it will be a shorter version, and then there'll be a longer version pre-town meeting in February.
Okay, great. Uh, Joe DiNardo, anything?
No, all set.
Okay. John Paul?
All set.
The only other thing I had tonight was um, as I'm sure most of you are on the call, are aware, I, I was fortunate enough to win uh, one of Rutland County's three senate seats. Um, that, that is a job that will keep me in Montpelier, or depending on the virus, on Zoom Tuesday through Fridays for the first four or five months of the year. Uh, and I do not believe that um, in fairness to all of you, the voters of Rutland County, my family and so on, that I would be able to fulfill all these obligations. Uh, and I, I believe that the right thing for me to do will be to plan an exit strategy here over the next few meetings as to um, what that looks like, uh, and when that comes to a conclusion for me, I will certainly talk to the four of my colleagues to determine what's best. I did notice that while we've been here, Kevin Brown did send over some um, uh, statutory language on when there is a departure from the board. Um, and what the Select Board has to do to publicly advertise it and so on. Um, I will say that my term was up in March, so I'm almost at the conclusion of my current three-year term. Uh, and uh, whatever my colleagues decide, it would give an opportunity to appoint someone, or um, whatever you decide, but uh, it could be an opportunity to get someone's feet wet, uh, and allow them to try it out for six or seven Uh, and allow them to try it out for six or seven meetings before they had to decide if they wanted to run in March or not. So, uh, I certainly appreciate the well wishes and, uh, you know, I'll have more to say at a future meeting, but, uh, I did wanna let, um, I know some of you probably wondered what the plan was, so that's sort of the plan as of, uh, now. So, um, any comments on that? Okay.
This is, uh, Kevin. I, what I sent and I can resend to the entire board is my legal analysis the last time this situation occurred when Chris, uh, stepped down. And, and it just lays out the basics, the basic requirements of the, of the law with respect to filling the select board vacancy. So tomorrow I can resend that, uh, to everyone. It, it's pretty, it's pretty straightforward.
Thanks, Kevin, for that. Uh, if there's nothing further at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session with the town's attorney, Kevin Brown, for the discussion of, uh, several legal, um, um, uh, the, a discussion around some of the lo- lawsuits in regards to the railroad and other matters.
So moved.
Motion by Sharon, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mary. For discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Uh, motion passes. Uh, so I'll have Bill Sweet, uh, he will. Okay, we are back out of executive session. It is, um, seven fifty-eight. Uh, we've been in executive session with the town's attorney. Uh, at this time, colleagues, is there any action to be taken?
Move we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mary, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Joe DiNardo. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We are adjourned. Good night, everyone. Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin.